Welcome, everybody. We'll start with the approval of the agenda that is before us today for our 1:30 council meeting. So I'll entertain a motion for approval of the agenda.
Can I make one addition?
You can ask.
Just the recognition, I'm not sure what's going to happen, that it's treaty date here.
Okay.
And just to recognize that. That's an annual event to recognize. We're all treaty people, so.
Okay, so we do recognize that today is treaty day.
And other than that, I will make a motion to accept the agenda.
Thank you. It's been moved by Councilwoman Stewart, in the vision to recognize treaty day. And we are all treaty people, so seconded by Councilwoman Dowling.
Good consideration.
With the addition, yes. All in favor of the motion?
Aye.
Aye.
Contrary-minded? Motion is carried to approve the agenda, so we'll move forward. We have three sets of minutes to approve, so we'll start with the regular council meeting September 3rd, 2020.
I'll make a motion for a minute to circulate.
It's been moved by Councilwoman Clanton, seconded by Deputy Warden Poirier, that we approve the minutes of the regular council meeting of September 3rd. All in favor of the motion?
Aye.
Aye.
Contrary-minded? The motion is carried. Now we have before us also the Committee of the Whole meeting of September 17th, 2020. Do we have a motion to approve those minutes?
I'll make a motion, Lord.
Moved by Councilwoman Dowling, seconded by Councilwoman Clanton, that we approve the minutes of Committee of the Whole on September 17th, 2020.
Excuse me, Warden.
Yes.
May I ask, will we be able to talk about business arising from this meeting?
Yes. From all of those meetings?
Yeah.
Yes. Okay, so it's been moved by Councilwoman Dowling, seconded by Councilwoman McLennan, that we approve the minutes of the Committee of the Whole meeting September 17th. All in favor of that motion?
Aye.
Aye.
Contrary-minded? Motion is carried. Also, we had a special meeting of council on September 25th, 2020. Do we have a motion for approval to?
I move that we adopt the special meeting of council on September 25th.
Okay, it's been moved by Deputy Warden Poirier, seconded by?
Seconded.
Councilwoman Mustard, that we also approve the minutes of the special meeting of council on September 25th. All in favor of that motion?
Aye.
Aye.
Contrary-minded? Motion carried. We also have, number four, business arising from any of these sets of minutes. So council is welcome to bring up anything that is considered to be business arising from these minutes.
Yeah, just to follow up with the potential meeting with the MLA, Alan McMaster. I did have a conversation with him outside. We were meeting with a couple of representatives from health looking at the internship program at Inverness Hospital. So we're one of 10 sites in the province that gets two interns every year in perpetuity for two years. And they're doing amazing stuff like setting up clinics there. Or because I see someone in emergency who doesn't have family doc, they advise them to become part of their cohort so that they're giving everyone a frontline doctor who's under the supervision of a permanent doctor there. So good things happening there. But I did address Alan, not having enough information that I thought would have been the point of record to make a comment to the public about a housing development in Inverness. And he didn't sound like he was making his way here. So I do think it's important that we impress on him. The idea of working together is fundamental to our county. And looking at the municipality and just from a distance and saying we're not doing the work isn't an effective way to work together.
No disrespect.
So just to circle back around to our staff, impress on him the importance of working together, to have information, to share information, and to help us get our priorities set. It's just one of the messages I'd like to send. Because I think when we look at our NP, Mr. Kellaway has met individually, I know with myself and that he put other, and met with council, and I think that's the type of, we need cooperation right now. In light of the pandemic and how we're going to negotiate the next little while. So I'd just like to impress on the press, number one else, that this is a time to make that same commitment like TIR, to meet with us quarterly or whatever that timeframe is, and to learn from each other what we can do together better.
And that is looking forward. Right now, there should, I mean, it would have been nice if he could have been here today for our council meeting to, you know, to have a two-way conversation with our representative with the province. So I would like to make sure that this continues while some of us may not still be here.
Absolutely.
So we want to make sure that there is a plan developed where we can have our NP on a regular basis and have our MLA on a regular basis. To make sure that they're aware of what we're doing, how we're doing it, and what our future plans are, so.
Councilwoman Mustard, Warden, I agree with you 100%. And I, first and foremost, I would like to check or see if there's any, the CAO or the administration here has received any notes or plan for Alan McMaster to come in and introduce himself and talk to us about the facilities and the problem that we had, you know, as far as wastewater and order. So, Mr. CAO, do you have any information for us?
Sure, as requested by council the day after our previous Committee of the Whole meeting, I did call and left messages with various numbers for the MLA as well as the follow-up email. And so I called the MLAs and MLA's contact information a number of times. And I reset my email, or I sent an updated email yesterday just to see what the opportunity would be. And they got back to me this morning, just with an email. I'm not going to go through it all, but I'll just minimize two parts. So he does thank us for the invitation, "If you please, meet with council after the October 17th election." And then also that if the meeting with council after October 17th could be more of a general nature than just specific to infrastructure with water, wastewater infrastructure throughout Inverness County. So I just received that this morning at 9:18.
Councilwoman Clanton?
Having heard the response, I would say it can be in general in nature, but one of the items we need to discuss is the wastewater and other infrastructure issue along with our general discussion, I think. And to just take that off the table, I don't see any reason why we need to do that. And like Councilwoman Mustard said, we need to be working together. And there is issues, that's where the issues seem to have come up lately. And that's something we shouldn't be talking about, so we are working together on it. So I would invite him. I can understand him wanting to meet after the election because there could be changes. He'll be meeting with the new elected council. And, but that should happen, we should ask for that to happen fairly soon. And make up an agenda, some of the things we'd like to talk about, including that. And if he wants to reject it, then we'd like to meet again after that to discuss that. Do you want one meeting or two? We'll give him as much time as he needs. I think it's important. Now, in the future, I think it should be a periodical, or a semi-annual or quarterly meeting like we do with transportation. And we could even maybe do it with our NP as well, so the both of them meet with us and we can all share whatever works the best for everybody involved.
Warden, you know, I personally totally disagree. He shouldn't be here to talk when he put in to back up what's sitting in Iran. If he's not deadly enough, he's walking away from his responsibilities since day one. What I don't like about this is I have, we are living in a democracy here. And sometimes I'm very vocal, but sometimes there is a reason to be vocal. And I'm going to explain why. I can't understand why. I don't want to put any pressure on Urankhan or Iran, but what I said, and I'm going to read it again so that Parla can put it there, there was nothing put in Iran except by Bill Scunneble that we put Alan to demand. I have a problem being from the north. We don't hear too much from the south. It's all centralized about Inverness, which I have a lot of respect for. I worked in Inverness. I had the dollar store. I was treated like a king. I had the recycling depot. I was treated like a king. But the point is, at this time, what is happening here is all, everything is all put in and it seems that our information is not going out far enough. Personally, what I would like to do is to have a meeting with this council or another council next time, hopefully it will be all of us. And then we would have a meeting with Parla, CHNU, the Iran, the HAP, the reporter, anybody social, any media, to talk about what we took over and the bills that we have. The people of Inverness County don't know the situation we were three or four years ago when we sat at the table and we had the operational review and we owed $105 million in order to have a wastewater and anything up to par. So my, I'm not frustrated, but I feel that I, one way or the other, personally, maybe not as a council, but as deputy warden and councillor for Pleasant Bay, Meadcombe and Shetecam, I will come across with the truth. How are we? And again, it seems, bill again in Iran yesterday, the taxes. It happens that Inverness has higher taxes now, but they don't. The people that have higher taxes is John Dowling's writing, over $3 million. So, you know, the media seems to be working around Inverness, which I respect, which I love, which bring business to everybody, higher taxes. But we need everybody, every district to be on equal footing. And that's my reason today. And I feel, that's what I feel, and that's what, the way I feel, I say it. And I'm not frustrated, but I'm just saying that the way democracy should be run, and it's not being run at this point in time in Inverness County.
Thank you very much, Deputy Warden. And, you know, perhaps those are some of the things that we should also relay to our MLA just to make sure that he's knowledgeable about how Inverness County is playing catch-up with infrastructure. So anyway, I know that the staff is working diligently to make that happen, but everybody has to be aware that it is a struggle and it takes time to upgrade all of our systems. So it's probably going to take us another nine years at least, so. Councilwoman Dowling?
Warden, the only thing I have an issue is for, you know, what's going to happen in the next two weeks. I mean, like Ms. Alfred said, we'll all be back, but if not, we're not all going to be back here. What's happening now in Inverness is happening now, so why is the MLA waiting for a month's time or two months down the road to see what's actually going on? The issue's been brought up already. It's not new. Why the wait?
No, we would have to question that.
Councilwoman Mustard is probably more than 100% familiar with what's going on, as well as with staff, of course. Let's deal with it now. Why wait? Why wait further, I should say?
So what do we do? Insist that he comes to a meeting?
We've already asked.
We've asked, yeah, and we've got his back.
I would personally send him a registered letter, you know, being put in Iran and all the social media that he has to show up with the councillors that have been dealing with the problems that we had the last few or four years. Because if we get new councillors, they won't know anything about it. Not that they're not smart, but they didn't live the last few or four years with the problem that we had. And let's say you're not, well, you're elected already, but let's say you're not elected. You're not elected. You're not elected.
What do you mean?
What do you mean? Oh, yeah. I'm just saying this.
Yeah, I know what you mean.
And then you end up, you know, I'll have to talk again, you know, which is pretty natural. But at the same time, I think we should be able to have him in the next two, three days in here by the latest next Wednesday, have him here with us. And if you want the media with it, go for it. And then we'll explain what's happening. And I still think personally that the people of Inverness County should know. You know what? You talked as warden the first four, the last four years, and how we talked, and what we did with our new CAO and all our good team that are working. And we're very happy with it, and we don't hear nothing about that. We don't hear nothing about us, you know? And that is the major problem that we had. Because I hate to say this, but sometimes self-praise is no praise. But we're doing a half a job, or we did a half a job, every, each of you, one of us.
Well, with what we were confronted with, for sure, we did. We did a great job.
I do support at the next Committee of the Whole, even though it's right before the election, that he show up. One of the comments made to me, and once again, it wasn't in a meeting, but just informally was, "You better get on Central App." I said, "Well, we've been meeting." And so that level of not knowing how many meetings are going on now with TIR and the whole team and the municipality to make sure the infrastructure's in place before the pavement goes down, it's been going on for months. And that he doesn't know about that, and that he should be sitting in on that because it represents provincial or Nova Scotia power, infrastructure, is to me a sign that we're not on the same page. We're not participating, we're looking down on the municipality or that we're not really doing our job when, darn it, we're trying to do our job and plan forward. It's the same as the roundabout in Wyckonham. And all the work that's going around that, John, and the sidewalks and stuff, that's a lot of infrastructure that's not ours, it is ours, right? And so part of the accusation is that we don't have to get involved in TIR's work. We are partners in all infrastructure that's going on. And so I think it is important that we emphasize coming and meeting with the existing council will allow us to sort of bring him up to speed on some of the work that has been done right now that he may not be aware of. And how can he move forward with the new council in supporting the priorities of this council when we have to come up with a large provincial contribution to the deficit we're running in infrastructure? So I would respond, why email and letter if that's the case, to make sure that the MLA does know that we'd like to see him before this council is on.
So what I'm hearing is that we are going to write a letter, whether it be registered mail or not, I don't know, if that's a possibility, and we are insisting that he meet with us too, so that we can update him on all the work that's being done and the position we are in, so. Yes, Councilwoman Clanton?
I'd like to concur with what our deputy warden has said about demanding the meeting before the election. And I think using his point that everybody around the table right now are the people who have dealt with this and to meet after the election, it could be the same people, but there's chances that could change. So we want to meet so everybody has a chance to bring him up to speed in the work that's been done by council.
That's definitely a.
So that statement should be part of that letter, whatever else goes in it. But I think that tells him why we're asking in a very clear way prior to.
Yep.
Whether we're going to pick a date or a certain day or whatever, we have to.
We have the date picked. I'm just saying if it's the COW, the next COW meeting was going to be on the 15th, or?
So that's the day we're going to meet with him or?
Well, we could ask them. I mean, on the 15th, we're here anyways for the COW. We didn't.
That day or another day of his choice that we may be available. So that would be our first choice because we are going to be here, I would think.
Some of us are here on Wednesday as well.
On the 14th, yeah.
14th as well for police advisory, so.
We should always make a caution.
I'm just going to see. I think I'm available.
We'll give him options then, will we?
Yeah.
October 15th or another date that he may be available? But we have to insist that he does attend.
Yeah, another date. If he can't make it on the 17th, he might have something on the go. Whether he does or not, we should make it another day.
I can't be here on the 15th.
I guess maybe.
You can't be?
I totally, I've got three different meetings in there that came up just this week and I can't get out of them. One is with my commitment, Halifax, the Zoom call that I have to chair. So, and then there's a meeting on cell service in the community, which is a high priority. I better not, I better show up at that one. So that's just my schedule that day. I don't know if we can move it, but if not, I don't have to be here either.
I don't know if it's going to be possible for all of us to be here, including Alan McMaster. Because we have to work towards that.
If we had an alternative, what about having the 14th as an alternative? That doesn't work. That's the day before. I don't know about the people.
Well, I'd say Warden Poirier and I are both here for.
Police advisory, yeah.
So what time of day is that?
1:30.
So if we did something before lunch?
Yep, that works for me.
Give some options.
14th or 15th?
Yep, 14th or 15th.
14th looks like the best, definitely a day I can attend where I can't the 15th, if that makes any difference.
Okay, yeah, well, I mean, we'll lean towards that if we can, to make sure we're all here.
But if he can only come on the 15th, you know, if you get the meeting, go ahead. I'm fine with that. I'm fine with everybody else being involved, so.
So all of the things that we've discussed will be put into an email, a letter to our MLA, inviting him and more or less insisting that he come so that we can update him on information that's incorrectly reported on in the media, for the rest of time. I don't think that we are delaying a housing project, are we? No.
And all the work we've done around the housing strategy, which seems to be not picked up. I know it's a complex issue and it's just like, oh, you know, approving a housing project, it's much more complex than that. The details are missing throughout the reporting, and I'm just saying, and certainly with Alan's, you know, in attendance, we can talk about that. How can we get support from, now it's a municipal affair at the province level, housing? Let's work as a team. That's my message. It doesn't matter who's in these positions. As representatives of the people, we need to be working as a team in this small county and not be looking down upon someone or they're not doing their job and not paying close attention to what's really going on, so.
Okay, so we're good with that, Deputy Warden?
Yeah. Another question regarding the road, the crosswalk. Was a letter to be sent out to, that's some council, September 3rd. Was a letter sent out to, did we get a response yet to the crosswalk?
We didn't do the letter, but I, because I did speak to the area manager, so I don't think we can still send the letter, but it's certainly, we'll have a plan for your update by next week.
It's fully entered.
Yes.
Thank you.
Thanks. Anything else from business arising, folks?
No, it's fine.
Okay, the next item on the agenda is the Milford Road in Wyckonham.
So Milford Road is a road in the community of Wyckonham. And it was advanced by Councilwoman McLennan for J-Class road paving. And that was approved by the province of Nova Scotia and then subsequently approved by council. And this road in particular, even though most of the people that live on that road have always classified it as Milford Road, and they thought it was always one road collectively, that whole area. So the map I just sent you out is the designation that TIR uses for that road. So it was actually broken down into three components. There's a J-Class road component, which is 0.49 kilometers. Then an I-Class road of 0.10 kilometers. And then there's a K-Class section, which is 0.31 kilometers. And along this road, according to TIR's database, it then switches to a Monroe Road. But all the residents and their addresses are still Milford Road. So it just shows how road classification can be very difficult. You've been driving on this particular road all your life and you would think it's just one completely fully registered road of all the same. But it is broken, it's basically three roads that's called Milford Road. So we just wanted to make sure this was on the agenda. Residents have been calling the councillor as well as Department of Transportation and some emails I received and calls as well from residents, just wondering what the situation is because they saw the painting markers up to the J-Class road section and then none afterwards, and they're a bit confused by that. So just as an update with those follow-ups with TIR, they are looking at what options there may be to extend paving further up after the J-Class road. I'm not sure how those discussions internally with the department have progressed, but it is something they are discussing. But in terms of this road, the J-Class portion paving component is and will be very shortly underway.
Questions?
So, okay, go ahead, sorry.
Was there not an issue with snow removal on this in winter too? No, so they are going to continue with snow?
Oh, yeah, no, they always paved it, or paved it, plowed it, I should say.
Plowed it, okay. I remember a road recently where the.
There's a place where the school bus turns up above, where it's, I guess, right around where that K-Class arrow is.
So snow removal is not a problem, it's the paving?
No, no, no.
It's a fully registered public road, it's just that it's, the road is chopped up into various classifications.
And they only want to pave to where?
The J-Class.
NDLs?
The line ends, is it?
Yeah, I believe so, if that's.
That's about 50% of it.
So the K-Class is unmaintained.
Pardon?
It says on the outside of the diagram here, the mapping, K, a K-road is unmaintained. So I wonder how many kilometers of that is unmaintained?
Point 31.
Point 31.
Point 31, yeah.
I know Councilwoman McLennan had a question, but thank you, Pete, for getting these classifications after three years of trying for what a road was. Because we never knew what a classification for most of the time, my apologies, council.
But they're all listed, but they're in different categories.
Yeah, but they never ever explained those before, what some of the classification was.
But Alan McMaster was talking to transportation over that last bit of road, the I-Class to the K-Class, and the transportation are willing to pay half if the municipality would pay half. That's the, but then it went down across from, right at the TransCanada, at the bottom of the page, there's about 300 feet of road there. It's not shown on the map. And people are wondering why that's going to be paved. Can we take the paving out of there and put it up on the?
Is the other one down here, is that J-Class or? It looks not on the map.
No, that's understood. J-Class or I?
Across the highway?
Yeah.
Milford Road still extends and it's still considered J-Class on that very small portion on the opposite side of the TransCanada.
But see, the paving there is.
It crosses the Trans.
Pardon?
It crosses the TransCanada.
Yes.
But see, the paving there is nothing wrong with. That's what the people are saying to me and I looked at it myself and they were wondering if we could take that paving and put it up with the.
Was that paving part of the original project?
Yes.
Apparently, yes.
Okay.
Yeah.
That'd give you a little more. They put a price tag on doing that?
Oh, I don't know.
That's the first thing we'd have to look at.
Well, no, all John's asked for is to extend it.
Yeah.
Yeah, keep going.
But they're looking to split it out.
But TIR willing to pay half from this yellow line right up to the end. That's the word I got.
If the municipality pays half.
Yeah. And maybe we can take the bottom lane, that 300 or 400 feet. Don't use that because there's paving there. That road is very rarely used, that's the thing, and the paving's good on it.
So you're suggesting a swap?
Swap, yeah, right on. But no, that, but even there earlier, transportation put a color ding up on the I-Class part of it.
Oh, really?
Oh, God, yes.
Well, I mean, that doesn't mean there's paving coming, but it's bad. Sometimes it does, yeah.
So anyway, I was wondering what council think of it.
So we have had no correspondence from TIR in terms of them paving that other section or requests for any funds from municipality, so I'm not, so I've had no indication that they're willing to do that paving on the record or the policy.
So maybe when Alan comes to meet with us, we can have a conversation. But I mean, that's just the exact fact we're trying to make here. If we were all meeting together, we could be following up on that and have the lines of communication so that that could be easily coordinated between the number of people talking to TIR.
Well, at the least, what needs to come to us is a request letter with the price tag that we'd be responsible for. And once we have that, then we can make an informed decision. And I would say we either ask for that or see if it comes forward and ask Alan.
I think that we need to really open the door with TIR first and see if they're willing to do that swap.
Yeah, and what it's going to cost.
Swap at no costs. The half and half was probably next year's budget for me. I'm just saying, for us to keep extending our budget, which we know we've already covered a couple of over.
We've extended it to two?
Well, I'm just saying, this has been a big year for us. I'm not saying we don't do 50/50 on it, but let's see if we can do the swap, get that in place while, before they put the paving down this fall.
Yeah, so we'll have to investigate it before we make a final decision on it, maybe.
Yeah.
It can happen, especially since we're having another meeting for two. Okay, so we'll leave that one for now until we get official word from Department of Transportation. We'll ask for official word from the department and offer to swap if possible. Okay?
Well, sorry, but we swapped in here in this, so I can't see.
We did, yeah. We just have to do it through them. They have to be in agreement.
Should we be sending a letter asking what's going on with this or just wait for them to respond? There's two ways of looking at that.
I'll get them to respond.
Okay.
Okay?
Well, maybe Keith should pay attention to them as well to make sure that the kilometers and everything are.
If John talks and they would respond to the office.
Yeah.
Yeah, oh, yeah.
So the swaps that did occur, streets replacing other streets through the J-Class road program, were J-Class roads being swapped for J-Class roads. So we have these two roads here, or this part of Milford Road, parts of which is called Monroe Road. That's I-Class and K-Class. So I'm sure TIR will be following up with us soon with any updates on what they're able to move forward with.
Very good.
Okay, sounds good.
The leftover pavement, send over to Margery.
Just dump it in here.
So we're going to communicate, you're going to communicate with the province and Keith is going to communicate with the province regarding a swap. Okay?
Right on, good.
Okay, item number six, we have an update on heavy garbage pickup. And Keith, back on again. I think the garbage is out already.
Yeah. Heavy garbage, the schedule, I'm just going to hand those out to council just for your review. So heavy garbage is moving forward on a contract basis with the municipality. It'll be starting, it's outlined in the schedule. We're not, we're having a difficult time anticipating the amount of volume due to the issues with COVID-19 and not allowing us to be able to do a summer pickup or spring pickup. We do know from the volume material that did come into our transfer station and our construction and demolition site in Kenlock that there was a significant amount of material that has come in over the last number of months. That could signal that it may be a little bit lighter, but it may not. We may have a very heavy garbage collection this October. Right now, we have a budget of $45,000 for that, depending on the volume. If that may have to be increased, we will monitor that on a weekly basis so we can keep council up to date. But certainly, we could be anticipating a lot of material for this fall. Usually, the fall pickup is much later in terms of volume and it's a service the municipality has been providing the residents. But with, again, as I mentioned, summer not being able to be put in place, this could be even above and beyond what our summer volume traditionally is for our heavy garbage pickup. So moving forward, we're just going to, we're anticipating that it is going to be a high volume. So we may have to come back to council with an adjusted budget as we monitor the progress. But certainly, you have the schedule here. The first week will be central Inverness, which includes, it's all broken up there. Monday, Inverness, Tuesday, Fort Hood and area, Wednesday, Inverness, South Bay, and Thursday, Mykogama, and Friday, Navu area. The week of October 2nd, we'll be focusing on southern Inverness and then week of the 19th, northern Inverness.
October 12th.
Oh, sorry, yes. Week of October 12th, south Inverness, October 19th, north Inverness. Also in your package and in communications, material that is, that's going to be picked up and material that is not for heavy garbage. I know no matter how much communications, there are times confusion around that and I suspect that.
The wet mattress.
Yes, I expect you'll be all getting some calls over these weeks and please forward any of those issues that may come up to myself and the appropriate staff and we'll get those definitely appropriately. So some people miss the timing. Sometimes there's material picked up that's put in place that may not even been picked up. So we'll troubleshoot any of those issues as the heavy garbage progresses or weeks progress.
Councillor Daley?
Keith, are we doing our own heavy garbage pickup, your own stuff or are we subletting or subcontracting?
It's a subcontract, just to again make sure we're, due to COVID-19, we have a limited amount of staff that are currently working almost on a daily basis with water sewer and crosscut issues and other issues throughout the municipality. So it's another layer of protection to make sure our team is, has as less exposure as possible. So we'll see how this goes and we are proceeding with a contract basis this time around.
The only, if I can, you can't tell.
Go ahead.
The only question I have, just as I've been getting some feedback already from the product group, where they seem to, when this went out on Facebook on Monday or Tuesday, some, I'm getting some of the feedback. Brendan's making calls, of course, that.
They want to have one too.
No, that they think some of this is actually part of them. So hopefully our contracts are going to be very specific, especially it's only going to affect my district as to where my district touches the town production limits so that our contracts are creating, if you're paying them by bulk, which is what it is by tonnage, that they're only touching municipality of Inverness County residents.
They have to be aware of where they want to.
Yeah, aware of that, the line terror. And because it's, I've seen lots on Facebook and Brendan spoke with me yesterday about it.
So when we put out the request for proposals on this work, we gave potential contractors both options to submit costs based on an hourly type of approach and/or with weight.
Is this on the website too?
Yes, it's on Facebook.
It's now been posted, yes.
So we can direct people there.
Yes.
Okay.
Very good.
Okay, any other comments or questions on our heavy garbage pickup? Okay, next we're going to have an update on cell service.
That's besides the quiet asylum. Yeah, I dropped the call.
The municipality, we've received, municipality posted requests for proposals for cell coverage. Submissions were provided to the municipality from various potential providers and other companies. So those have been reviewed and scored. We're just working towards some final back and forth with one of the firms in order to be able to present a finalized potential plan for council at our next committee, the whole meeting. But we've been diligently making sure we're followed up with references and such for the various submissions. And we had to get additional information on some of the submissions as well. So we're very close to providing council with a full update at our next committee, the whole meeting.
How many companies submitted?
We did have, we had, we had three submissions.
And you've narrowed it down?
Yes.
Good.
We did have inquiries and we thought we were going to receive a fourth, but that did not transpire.
Councillor Brendan?
And I made you aware as well, Keith, that's one of the meetings I have on the 15th is with a committee in Margery that's meeting to discuss cell service, where they need to go next, like many communities are doing. And I've invited our CAO to come. Just a meeting with an MLA, then that's, I understand that it's not 100% necessary you're there, but you're more than welcome and I'll get to the information on that. Is there, I know they're going to be asking me or you if you're there for an update from the municipality. Is there other information by then? Well, the committee, the whole meeting may happen the day before. I'm just wanting, I want to be able to give them a good understanding of where we are and what we've been doing because we have been doing a lot.
What day is your meeting?
The 15th, the Thursday, the day the committee, the whole was scheduled for. Just what can I release and what's confidential there too? I mean, anything here is not confidential, so, but.
Well, the committee, the whole meeting will be a public update, so then we can meet with community groups or any other individuals that want some more information on that, on the submission, or on the successful submission.
And if you're able to attend, obviously you'd have information we could work with together around.
Yes, yeah, for the Margery session, for sure.
Okay, thank you.
Okay.
Just West Bay Riverland.
Pardon?
Just West Bay Riverland.
Okay, let's not fight over. There's lots of gaps across the municipality.
Thank you, Karen, Margery.
There you go.
Across the municipality from coast to coast.
He was quiet there.
And has anybody noticed that reception is poor in the last while? Worse than it already is?
New phones are terrible.
It's hard to get poorer when you don't have it at all anyway, so.
Well, there's nothing to compare it with, huh?
But that's the number one question I get out there is what's happening on cell service, more than internet, actually. Cell service. I don't know what we can do, but.
At least if you can get cell service or you can get internet on your phone if you have it.
Yeah.
Okay, so we're going to have an update on accessibility and I believe Charlotte is going to do a presentation for us. Welcome, Charlotte.
Hi, I'm coming closer so everyone can hear me. I'm a low talker. So, yeah, last week I attended the accessibility, developing accessible plan, which was hosted by the accessibility director. So basically what they were doing was outlining the responsibilities under the Accessibility Act. There are a couple of updates in relation to it. The presentation outlined that the municipality would be, how the municipality will identify, remove and prevent barriers in policy, programs, practices and services and achievement dates. So it's a very specific plan they're looking for. This, the Accessibility Act, the prescribed public sector bodies include the municipality, education, universities and schools. So our responsibility would be to create or to reengage because I believe we have an advisory, an accessibility advisory committee that is in existence within the community. So we would have to either reengage or look at developing another advisory committee for the plan. The advisory committee would basically be a guiding force for the document who would have basically input on the final draft as well as their expectation is that we would do complete public engagement for those that are affected by accessibility issues within the community so that we have everything identified. In addition to that, the deadline originally for the plan was a year from the date the act basically commissioned the creation of the plan, which would have been April 2021. But that, due to COVID, like everything else, has been pushed back. They haven't announced the official date for that. They are going to make that sometime this fall. So that was the information. They have provided us with a toolkit, which basically outlines all the requirements for the plan from staff lead to engaging with the advisory council, proper engagement tools and techniques. So basically, they are asking us for a collaborative approach, but they are letting basically folks know and they want us to promote this within the community that they want a collaborative approach, but they are, under the act, they are able to find non-compliant organizations up to $25,000. Yeah, so basically, they will work with us. They have provided us with a regional support person from their staff. So they have, they identified that within the presentation. That's who provided us with the toolkit. So basically, we have a year or a little better to get this reign, reignited and put some focus to it. That's it for the update.
Well, thank you very much, Charlotte. Any questions or comments, Councillor Daley or Councillor Brendan?
Thank you, Charlotte, for that and I'm glad you were able to attend that meeting. I chair the accessibility advisory committee for development of the policies and the laws and all the government stuff that's going for. and all the government stuff that's going forward. We just submitted our first set of recommendations to the minister, and they are being reviewed, and our step two is taking those recommendations, and we're doing, we divide it into subcommittees, and we're looking at those recommendations in a much broader detailed way, and that's where we are right now. The committee that's established here in Inverness County, both Jim and I have sat on that, I think it's a good committee, we haven't been that active lately, obviously for a number of reasons, including COVID, but the committee's still intact, and I had an email from Callan McQuory wanting to get reorganized again just recently, so I think that's a good idea. We need to talk about, that's a separate entity now, because the committee went and registered as a, as a society under the Societies Act, so it, in order to be able to do some fundraising, which is a good thing for us, the committee goes, but it kind of puts it at a little distance from council and the municipality, because we're not allowed to raise funds like that, so.
One of the things they did say in regards to the committee, could be the formation of a new committee, it could be a shared committee, so if we want to.
That's just what I was thinking.
They share with our neighboring municipalities.
We can do that, and we also, with the committee we have, we can work with that committee, but it may be, we can work with the same people, we just have to define it for purposes of the municipality, but it's still its own entity out there, you know, there should be a way we can work around that, and that's something we should discuss when we first speak. The other thing I have available, should have available, he said he was going to send it to me last week, I didn't get it, but Town of Port Hoxbury has pretty well completed their plan, which would be very similar to what we would need, and they have no problem with, and I have no problem with us plagiarizing, long as the other.
Wagerizing?
Yeah. Long as the other group is okay using their.
Share the resource.
Share the resource, that's a better way of putting it, but using their information to help us, and if they have near a final product, we can look at it and say, here's kind of what I have, it gives us a really good idea what the scope is, and so I would suggest we get that, and I was promised, and I just haven't, the gentleman that promised, I'm sure he just didn't get to it yet, but, so we have that available, and I originally thought we'd work Victoria County, the Town of Port Hoxbury, and the municipality, Port Hoxbury kind of got off ahead of us, which is good, and they'll work with us well to help, so I think the first thing that should happen is between you and I, we can organize a meeting with the committee, bring them up to date, and talk a little bit about that structure versus the municipality, make sure we're okay there, and we should be ready to move forward, so.
Sounds like a good plan.
Yeah, and everything else provincially is working real well, starting to make it. Just want to mention as well, if you're going by Granite Tang, we funded it actually, the new fishing here, and wharf is there, right just after you go around the sharp turn after the bridge, it's just down the first right, so you can see that, and Paula here is taping us today, she did a nice story on it, and then there's another one, fishing wharf that was sponsored as well at Legalaw, that has provided accessible fishing on the lake there as well, and it's well built, so there's a couple, then you have the beach in Inverness, there's a couple of really nice projects that happened in this county, right?
Yes, sir.
And by volunteer groups, and when they do that, they learn a lot too of that too, because they, but one of the points they made in Granite Tang, and it was a salmon association in both cases did these projects, they did them, and had, I found out after the fact, they had to go out searching out a lot of their own information. As far as our committee goes, we want it to be in print, but accessible to people to use, and you know, as far as the county goes, maybe we start with this building as one of the projects, just, and that can be a learning experience as well, which, you know, as we develop our plan, this building could be the first, first planet part of that, because I can give you a number of things that could be done a little better here to make it more accessible, so. Anyway, that's all I have to say, but I look forward to working with everybody out in the future.
Thank you, Council Trenton.
I just wanted to add, and because Callan, Callan McQuory, who's heading up the accessibility committee, is a quadriplegic, is looking into these fishing rods that are totally accessible that do all the casting for you, so there's a whole bunch of integration going on, and you know, just not to underestimate the importance of the advisory group, and people maybe putting out the call to the whole county to just get the ideas flowing, they're always doing research on what accessibility are barrier free, so it's just mobility issues, sensory, so there's just a lot of learning about this, that I think once again can put Inverness County on the map, and already has, and already has.
And it can make a difference in your tourist industry as well, I mean, I've had calls for people wanting to come here fishing, just after those two projects were developed, and I was able to say, here, they're just brand, they're brand new.
Oh, that's great.
Have had a great, so.
It's good, it's great.
So the date that was originally set, April of 2021?
Ten, yeah, 2021, it will be extended, they just haven't announced.
They haven't announced a date?
Yeah.
At this point?
Yeah.
Right, and that date is set for everybody to have their plans in place?
That's right.
Okay.
So maybe you and I and Jim could talk a little bit about picking a time for the first meeting?
Yeah.
Any further comments or questions of council?
No, all good, it's very good. Thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you.
So now we're going to go on to our recommendations that came forward at committee of the whole. And the first one is St. Joseph de Moine Volunteer Fire Department, they are asking for some assistance through a loan guarantee for some work that needs to be done in their, on their trucks, I believe it was.
Do you want me to explain a little bit of that, or is someone here too? Basically, they had a breakdown in one of their trucks, major pumps or transfer case system went, I'm not sure exactly what it was, it contaminated by from water from the tanks somehow, and the whole system has to be replaced to the tune of around $30,000. Totally unexpected, one of those things that happens that ruin you, and they were looking for some funding as well, but really they don't qualify under the funding development fund, so the least we can do is provide a loan guarantee. This is not the new truck they just bought, or the new used truck, it's, but it's one of their major trucks, so that's kind of where they are, they're kind of a little bit of a panic trying to get this, the company they priced is a Truro Halifax, they'll come right to the fire hall and do the work, they've got a quote from them, they've been down and actually inspected everything and told them what they needed, and that was roughly the price tag, so.
So would you like to?
I'll make a motion that we approve, we approve a loan guarantee for the repairs to the St. Joseph de Moine truck owned by the fire department there.
In the amount of $29,600.
That's what it is, yeah.
Okay, then moved by Council Trenton, seconded by Deputy Warden Poirier, that we approve the recommendation made at committee of the whole, that a loan guarantee be granted to the St. Joseph de Moine Volunteer Fire Department in the amount of $29,600. All in favor of that motion?
Aye.
Contrary minded? Motion is carried. Next is the Judic Water Exploration, and there was a recommendation made at committee of the whole that council may, may approve, and it reads that council fund $38,800 plus HST from gas tax funds to deepen well number two in Judic in hopes of achieving increased yield. Would you want to make that a motion? Moved by Council Dowling, seconded by Deputy Warden Poirier, that, that we, that council approve the funding in the amount of $38,800 plus HST from gas tax funds to deepen well number two in Judic in hopes of achieving increased yield. All in favor of that motion?
Aye.
Contrary minded? The motion is carried.
Port Hood Water.
Go ahead.
I just saw nine for Port Hood Water, let's see, Port Hood or Inverness?
Port Hood Water and Sewer Services?
Yeah, the recommendation.
That's the, the letter we received from some of the residents that would like to have an extension of sewer and water on Marble Hill.
Oh, okay, sorry.
Yeah, I think that's what that one is, right?
Oh, okay. I just noticed that Inverness was not on there for the recommendation.
Yeah, that's true. I'll just take a look at that with everything.
Yeah, maybe you can add that one so that we missed.
Sorry, I didn't mean to interrupt.
No, no, I've just.
This one I was looking at, the motion for Judic, I know this one.
We just have to look back at our account a minute.
Yeah, and this one I was looking at.
Debbie's on that?
Sorry, I apologize.
So we'll get to it, we'll finish the others first, and then we'll get that one as well, because I do recall making that recommendation at committee of the whole. So the next one is the Shetty Camp Water Treatment Plant Roof. So it was recommended by committee of the whole that council fund an additional $10,218.94 for the roof replacement at the Shetty Camp Water Treatment Plant. A motion?
I move that we accept the water treatment plant roof money for the amount of $10,218.94.
Excellent, yes.
Second that.
Secondly, moved by Deputy Warden Poirier, and seconded by, any discussion, by the way?
Question?
Are we moving along too fast here?
No.
Seconded by Council Trenton, that we, that council direct municipal, oh, sorry, that council fund an additional $10,218.94 to the roof replacement at the Shetty Camp Water Treatment Plant. All in favor of that motion?
Aye.
Contrary minded? The motion is carried. The recommendation from council regarding the Port Hood Water and Sewer Services request for extension is the, is that council direct municipal staff to do an assessment of the Port Hood Water and Sewer Services and determine the current capacity and the availability for expansion. You have a motion?
Aye.
Moved by, moved by Council Dowling, and seconded by Deputy Warden Poirier, that we direct municipal staff to do an assessment of the Port Hood Water and Sewer Services and determine the current capacity and the availability for expansion. All in favor of the motion?
Aye.
Contrary minded? Motion carried. The Department of Transportation and Infrastructure Renewal Cost Overrun, the committee, the recommendation that came forward from committee of the whole was that council accept the cost overrun of 15.5% for the Birch Street repaving project.
I move that we accept the overrun of 15.2% on the paving project as the cost cost for the provision of government.
Okay, as been moved by Deputy Warden Poirier, seconded by Council Dowling, that council accept the cost overrun of 15.5% for the Birch Street repaving project. All in favor of the motion?
Aye.
Contrary minded? Motion is carried. And not necessarily last, because I think we are going to be doing another one after this one, but we'll do this one first. So at committee of the whole, it was recommended that council advance the request from the Lake Ainsley Development Association for several community signs to be erected and be in both English and Gaelic throughout District Two, Three, and Four to the Department of Transportation and Infrastructure Renewal. Do we have a motion? Moved by Council McLennan, seconded by?
I'll second.
Council Dowling, that council advance the request from the Lake Ainsley Development Association for several community signs to be erected and be in both English and Gaelic throughout District Two, Three, and Four. On to the Department of Transportation and Infrastructure Renewal, all in favor of the motion?
Aye.
Contrary minded? Motion carried. Okay, do we have one for Inverness?
No, that was just a, there was no actual recommendation, it was more discussion, suggesting staff just continue to move forward and complete estimates and costing.
Okay, I just, I missed, I missed the Port Hood one in the first one, I forgot the Port Hood was in the first one, it's.
Oh, right, so you thought, yeah.
I wasn't thinking, okay, I thought we, sorry, my apologies.
Oh, no, no worries. Okay. Okay, so we're down to next meeting date, so when that will be, we're not certain, but we do have committee of the whole, October 15th, when our next council meeting will be, that is to be determined. Most likely sometime in October, in November.
So right now, they're, if we're following the regular schedule that was set up by council, on Thursday the 15th would be committee of the whole meeting commencing at 9:30.
And I think we agreed to have that meeting? Would we not?
Yeah, more nearly concern I had about, and I know I agreed last time, this is, by Dowling and now, I mean, if we have any, should this council be really committing on to our next council, who's here or not is going to be voting on, that's kind of.
Well, we wouldn't be voting, we'd be making a recommendation, right?
That's what I mean, if we're recommending an issue.
And then they have to, yeah, okay.
That's the only thing that I see.
We would almost need to read, if there's new people here, we're going to have to bring them up to date of what we've discussed at the committee of the whole.
We'll still have to.
And if we had a number of recommendations.
Yeah, they took, these took.
It would almost be duplicating, it would almost be duplicating the COW meeting, if we had five or six recommendations, we'd have to go through that all again for any new people here, if there are, if there's not, it's a no brainer, but if there is, we would have to, before they would be able to make decisions.
Well, for the, Warden Poirier and Deputy Warden Poirier, I mean, if you two were here four years ago, what'd you just do then, did you ever, did you just have a?
Our last meeting was.
Wasn't that organized?
Oh.
No, before we started, I'm saying as a group before we started, before you took over.
Or was the, the?
Our October, what, eighth meeting was our last meeting, I think, four years ago.
Oh, because it split before the election.
It was a council meeting.
Yeah, I think, and then we didn't have a COW meeting.
We were having meetings on Mondays then.
But you wouldn't have had time though after the eighth.
There was no COW meetings then, mustn't it?
We, we weren't following the same pattern then.
No.
No.
That's right.
No, we were having meetings on Monday, we were having policy meetings, we were audit meetings, we were having community belt meetings, we were having all kinds of meetings, that now we have everything concentrated in committee of the whole.
Yeah, council was the only one that was really set, the rest were whenever it's been heard calling.
The council, usually finals, you know.
Since the last monthly meeting that we had, there didn't have been a rigmarigie.
Was there a little bit of rigmarigie that one?
Don't remember that at all? That was our last meeting, right?
So the next meetings are in November?
October 15th.
Council.
CEO of the whole.
But he's wondering where the council meeting's going to be.
November 6th, November 5th and Thursday, that's when we're going to have.
Well, that could depend on how many, how many recounts are going to be requested too after this.
Well, we'll have it anyway.
It didn't happen last time.
Of course, we've been here all night trying to discuss these.
Like I, like I said earlier, I think that our next council meeting will, is to be determined.
Determined, yeah.
Yeah, we've said, we're not going to set any schedule for that.
I just recall it was in the.
That's just my opinion, folks.
Well, the swearing in one for our first one in a term was delayed, because Dwayne asked for recount from himself, and we kept getting delayed as to.
Yeah, when the.
It's down.
Okay, so we're good with committee, we will be meeting at committee of the whole, and you know, we can keep in mind that when we're making recommendations, the fact that we may not all be here to approve them, so someone else will have the duties if. if, if that, if that occurs.
These two can make all the recommendations.
Well, there you go.
You might see this too.
Okay, so is there in hammering? No in hammering?
See, Deputy Warden is senior.
I am.
He is senior.
I believe a motion for adjournment is in order.
Before adjournment, I could finish by heavily, I had all those questions, the first meeting of the COW, if any media wants it, all the questions that were asked to the staff and the council, councilors and everything, and there was only one question that they all said yes, and I think it was Warden Lee McCory, about the housing commission, remember right, that's who were contacted, but yeah, they...
Oh, yes, yes, yeah.
Okay, June?
Okay, motion for adjournment? Moved by Counselor McGlynn.
I said it first.
Seconded by Deputy Warden.
Just to stress your point.
All in favor of the motion?
Aye.
Contrary-minded? We are adjourned.